Good afternoon, welcome to City Council Budget Workshop for March 3rd, 2022. Items listed on the agenda may be taken out of order. Two or more agenda items for consideration may be combined and any item on the agenda may be removed or related discussion may be delayed at any time. I will call the meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, could you confirm the posting of the agenda in our roll call?
Yes, the special meeting agenda was posted in accordance with open meeting law. And today we have absent Councilmember Matt Fox. We have a quorum present.
Thank you. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will go ahead and open our first public comment period. Public comment during this period must be related to items for action on the agenda. Each person wishing to speak will have up to five minutes. As always, we ask people to be civil and concise in their comments. Is there anyone in council chambers that would like to speak in public comment? All right, we will open the phone for anyone wishing to call in. The phone line number is (702) 589-9629. Madam City Clerk, were there any emails received for the initial public comment period?
No comments were received.
Thank you. All right, hearing no one for the initial public comment period, we will close public comment, move to item number one, presentation and discussion by staff. Mr. Tedder.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. I just wanted to provide an overview of the plan for today. So our Finance Director Diane Pelletier and Budget Manager Angela Mannenin will be alternating back and forth on different presentations going over the various budgets that will be before you today. And then we'll have Brock Armentraut giving a presentation on the fee schedule. We'll have time for questions and comments. The department heads are ready to answer any specific operational questions about their specific budgets. And then we can take into account any additions or adjustments that you may have. And then lastly, I do want to say thank you to the finance staff. There were a few evenings when everyone else was gone, but I saw Angela's light on and it just kind of shows her dedication and I really appreciate that. So without anything else, Diane?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The item number one on the agenda is going to be a presentation for discussion and staff directive regarding the 2223 budget. And I'd like to make a few comments before I turn it over to Angela. So today is the first meeting with the council to review the operating budget for 2223. This budget will cover the operating expenses for Boulder City beginning July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. During this meeting, we will seek guidance from the council on several items for next year's operating budget. These items include budgeting some ARPA funds, personnel matters related to Parks and Rec, BCTV, and utility billing. This is also an opportunity for you, the council, to ask clarifying questions on the operating budget and hear from department directors. Before our Budget Manager Angela Mannenin presents the operating budget numbers, let me take a few minutes to review how we arrived to today. The City Council adopted the tentative capital improvement plan, capital improvement plan in December, so this meeting will not include discussion of capital projects. So a budget review team consisting of the Budget Manager Angela Mannenin, myself, and Administrative Services Director Bryce Bolt, met with department directors to discuss their 2223 operating needs from January 18th through the 20th of this year. We then combined all the budget information and provided the budget information to our City Manager Taylor Tedder to review before meeting with each department. The budget team and city manager were scheduled to meet with the department directors from January 31st to February 3rd to go over that same information, but with the city manager in presence. But due to many illnesses among the staff, many meetings had to be rescheduled resulting in this step not being completed until February 14th. So due to the delay in completing the second round of operating budget meetings, today's meeting will primarily focus on the numbers. The budget message, budget narratives, and performance measures will be updated for the next meeting with the council, which will be around April 7th. So currently, these sections reflect last year's information in some areas. So some of it has been updated where we had time to do it, but most of it was not, so it'll be updated in the next iteration you review. And on February 16th, we had a Budget 101 Training Session that was held, and I thought it was a very good session held here in council chambers, and it was presented by Pool Pack, and that was from 1 to 4. Which brings us to this moment, so I'm going to turn this over to Angela so she can go over the numbers with you.
Angela?
Hi, Angela Mannenin, Budget Manager. Today, we're going to start with governmental fund budgets. And we'll start with what is a budget? A budget is a fiscal plan setting out anticipated revenue and expenditures for accomplishing a variety of services over a given time. A budget is not cash. In order for money to be spent, it must be included in the budget. An operating budget is expenditures for a current period. Capital budget shows the financial plan for long-term financial improvements, facilities, and equipment. So the budget process is four steps. First one is the preparation, where the expense estimates for departments in light of available revenues. And then approval by the city council and then submitted to the state. Implementation, and then the evaluation and audit of the budget, where performance is monitored and measured throughout the year. So our goals for today are to present a clear picture to the residents, council, and staff regarding the city's financial direction. Present summaries of revenues and expenditures, including personnel costs. Provide an overview and summary of city funds. Request direction on operation budgets from the council. This is an operations and maintenance budget meeting, so discussion of capital improvement projects other than funding is not included in today's meeting. So projected revenue assumptions for fiscal year 23. Our revenue assumptions are again continually be fiscally conservative. The general fund revenue for fiscal year 23 is budgeted at $35.6 million currently, which is $1.3 million higher than fiscal year 22. The consolidated tax budget is currently $13.3 million, which is $1.3 million in prior year. The property tax revenue remains flat compared to prior years at $1.8 million. And solar lease revenues remain stable, increasing at about $500,000 this year with contractual So a summary of the general fund funding sources. As you can see, since fiscal year 19, our revenues have remained constant around $35 million, $35, $36 million, with a big bump in fiscal year 21, which was our one-time solar lease option payment. So our revenues have remained relatively flat for the city. So the funding sources for the city are intergovernmental, which is 38.5%. It's $13.7 million and mainly is the consolidated tax revenue. Rents and royalties is 38% of the general fund revenue, which is $13.6 million. And these combined are over 2/3 of the entire revenue for the general fund. And then charge for services are $4.1 million, which 3.1 of that is coming from our golf courses. Taxes is 6.1% at $2 million, which is our property and room tax. License and permits at 4% is $1.5 million. And our fines and forfeitures are 1.1% at $400,000. This is kind of a graph to show the revenues by source of the general fund. The bottom part of the graph is our intergovernmental, which is curving upward. It's mainly our consolidated tax. The next area, the blue area, and our consolidated tax is currently at the $13.3 million. The blue area is our rents and royalties. And as you can see again, in that fiscal year 21, it had the large spike due to the one-time option payment. And so comparing 19, our rents and royalties were about $9.2 million to fiscal year 23 being $13.6 million. So they have increased as solar lease contracts have come in. Then charge for services has remained relatively the same, the orange bar. And then the red bar is our property tax and our room tax, which has remained the same since 2019 at about $2.1 to $2.2 million. Even though our expenses have increased, we haven't done anything to increase our taxes, which is the one thing the city has control over. And that's just a summary of our current revenues. Again, one of the large revenues for the general fund, which is about 1/3% or not 1/3, not 1/3%, sorry, is our lease revenues. So the total lease revenue for fiscal year 23 is expected to be at about $18.8 million. And of that 71.1%, it will go to our general fund, which is $13.3 million. And our special revenue funds will get 8.9%, which is $1.6 million. And the reason they are not getting 10% of what is ordained to be able to move to the special revenue funds is our revenue stabilization fund is very close to its maximum. So in fiscal year 23, we're not going to set aside any solar lease revenue for it. We're just going to probably in future years, but this one year, we're going to sit it out. And that 1% that would go into revenue stabilization is going to go into the general fund. And then the 20% that goes into the capital improvement fund is $3.7 million, which is the fund that the voters have to approve spending on capital projects. And also in our voter approved fund, the transfers out for fiscal year 23 is $1 million for the general fund to assist with capital improvement projects and $2,47,000 that will go to utilities that came from the land sales of the Track 349. And let me switch gears for a moment and talk about the special revenue funds. So these are our special revenue funds' current balances as of December 31st. Our revenue stabilization, which is that first graph, is at $2.7 million and its max is at $3 million, and that's why we're not recommending putting the 1.1% in for next year. And the 1.1% is $207,000, just so you guys have for reference. The next chart is risk management, which is currently at about $2 million with a cap of 8.9. Compensate absences currently has $2.5 million with a cap of $4 million. Extraordinary maintenance currently has $3 million with a cap of 8.9 million. And the VERF currently has about $2.5 million with a cap again of 8.9 million. And combined, these special revenues currently have about $13 million, which can assist the general fund when any of these type of emergencies arise. So just to summarize, the general fund for fiscal year 23, the budgeted revenues are $35 million. The budgeted expenses are $41 million. We have a transfer out to the acquisitions and improvements fund, which is our capital improvement fund, of $3.6 million. We have $1 million set aside for contingency, so in case of emergency, the council can vote on using this money if needed, if there's not the money in the budget already. The use of fund balance, not including the transfers and contingencies, is $906,000. And even using this fund balance, we still stay within our revenue, we still stay within the fund balance for our operations. So the general fund expenditures by function. Public safety is our largest budget, which is 36.3% of the total budget. It's at $14.9 million. Parks and Rec is 16.4% at $6.7 million. Public Works is 14.8% at $6.1 million. The general government is 13%, which is 5.5 million. Other financing is 11%, is $4.6 million, which is the $3.6 million transfer out for capital improvement and also the million dollar contingency. And then planning and development is $1.9 million at 4.8%. And the municipal court is 3% at 1.2 million. So some high-level department changes for fiscal year 23. Starting with Public Works, we're increasing the landscaping budget $80,000 to compensate for increased tree service costs. We're also increasing the engineering budget $20,000 for City Works software. This software will assist with permits and hopefully get our process more efficient. This is also a possible spending of ARPA money, which I will discuss later in this presentation. We're also going, we're looking into re-establishing the garage department to centralize vehicles' maintenance costs. So you don't see this in the presentation today, but in April, we'll come back with the garage department recreated, which will have the fuel for all the departments, the vehicle equipment and maintenance for all departments. And this will assist us with first evaluations. So Parks and Recreation, one of their large increases is actually bank fees. Our budget for fiscal year 22 was only $60,000, and we're moving that up to $120,000 for next year. We'd also like to convert a part-time personable department secretary to a full-time department secretary. Due to other cost savings in the Parks and Rec budget, this transition would be budget neutral and would have a full-time employee headcount increase of .2, since this position's already personable and works 32 hours a week. This position currently often has to work overtime to complete its workload, and upgrading this position will better service the community. Another large increase in the Parks and Rec budget is the mandatory increase of minimum wage, which is 7%. And also the annual golf course management and maintenance contracts increased by contractual Communications and BCTV. Communication is recommending cost savings of $24.5 thousand, cost savings, including removal of a part-time position. Boulder City TV is requesting a full-time graphic designer slash web designer, which would have an additional cost of $47,000 after the proposed savings and communications budget. This would increase the full-time employee headcount by one. This position will provide better service to the community by enhancing Boulder City's website, which has been the digital hub for everything in City Hall with ever-changing information and updates. Also assist with post-production of meetings that are available on BCTV and YouTube. The IT department, the increases are mainly all contractual. We also have an increase in maintenance equipment of $50,000, which will replace switches. And this is, the $50,000 is a one-time charge. The Police Department budget increased about 3%. This includes $120,000 for salary step increases and also $30,000 to replace equipment, including tasers and radars. Animal control budget increased $22,000 for veterinarian costs. Dispatch has requested new software and computers, which will increase their budget by $20,000. The Fire Department is also interested in the City Works permit software, which would increase their budget by $20,000. And again, this is a possible spending for ARPA money. Also increase their fire permit inspection contract by $33,000, and this would increase our permit inspections from going from only one day a week to four days a week. Community Development is also interested in the City Works permit software, and their costs will be $40,000. And again, this is possible spending of ARPA money. It would, they would also like to increase their professional for solar lease permit inspections for $25,000, which directly offsets with permit revenue. The Municipal Court has a lot of requirements on it for the next fiscal year relating to AB 424 and, which will include the need for additional court dates, and so also additional staff time. And so currently, we've added $300,000 to their professional line to address these unfunded mandates. And again, this is a possible spending for ARPA funding as well. So I don't know if you can see this, but currently, the City Council budget increased $100,000. And this was just as a placeholder to discuss the cost of updating the city code, including the Civil Code. This will probably be moved to the city clerk's budget once everything's said. And again, updating the code is a possible spending for ARPA funding. So current ARPA recommendations in our operating budget for fiscal year 23 is updating the municipal code. So the Civil Code updates are needed, especially with the new legislation changes and how the ARPA funding could be spent if you approve it, would be whatever the decided amount is to update the code. And we are working on sending out an RFP to find out what the actual cost would be, would be approving so-and-so dollar to go into the city clerk's budget to assist with items such as updating the municipal code. And the City Works permits, which would assist citizens with the permit process. It would also, also part of this is a digital blueprints program, which would speed up collaboration with Public Works, Fire, and Community Development to make our permits process go faster. And if ARPA funding was approved, it would just, you would approve ARPA funding to be spent for, in Public Works, Fire, Community Development to assist with the efficiency of permits. And Municipal Court compliance with legislation changes, and this again is to address the unfunded mandates where they're going to have to have a lot more court dates. It would be 300, right now, we have $300,000 set aside for municipal court to assist with the new legislation changes. This would, and this would currently assist with the general fund because it would increase the revenue coming into the general fund as the ARPA fund would offset some of these costs that are currently being just paid for with the general fund. Does anyone have any questions before I move on?
What are you moving on to? You've been talking for a while.
I know. Just the full, well, I'm going to sum up the governmental funds and ask for questions again, but just I know the ARPA and that was a lot of information to take in. So if you want to pause here, I'm ready to take questions.
I wanted to pause about 15 minutes ago, but... Councilmember Bridges?
Yes, thank you. I've read this like five times, and I really want to wrap my mind around the, how the AIF transfer adds to rather than subtracts from the, the expense, the revenue budget and/or the expense budget. I want to see how that, that fits into the picture. You talked about how the AIF transfer, the CIP transfer adds, when you add all those numbers, you know what I'm talking about?
Are you talking about, are you talking about utilities or in general fund?
General fund, please. And you're talking about the difference between the expense budget and the revenue budget of, you know, 5.6 million, and that number is made up, the difference is made up from the AIF transfer, the $1 million plus 962,000.
I know what you're talking about now.
Okay, and I want to figure out how that AIF transfer fits into this, making those two numbers equal.
Okay, so our total expenses for the general fund is $35 million and our total expenses are $41 million.
Correct.
So our capital improvement fund, before it's spent in CIP, and this is kind of just operational versus capital costs, so that $41 million, if you take out the $4.6 million, which is, the million dollars is the contingency, which is in the general fund, just as a placeholder, just in case there's an emergency that happens throughout the year that council can, can, can use because it's budgeted. Because general fund, if there's a, you can't use fund balance. If it's not budgeted in the year, something happens throughout the year, you guys have to wait till the end of the year. You can't.
Okay, so the 3.687944 is a contingency amount that...
Oh, sorry, nope, no, the 3.6, that, that money is, the NRS allows the general fund to transfer up to 10% of their expenses, less transfers out to a capital improvement fund.
Okay.
And that's the 10% basically of our expenses. So it would move to our...
Okay, so that's not actually an expense now.
Not necessarily.
But it could be.
Yes.
Ah, okay, that's, that makes it simple, thank you. I was trying to wrap my head around...
I was trying to separate the capital costs from the operating costs to show what, because I want to show the revenues, how much the general fund isn't coming in revenues to compare just to operating, not including CIP, because CIP excuses it.
You did a perfect job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Adams?
So just for clarity, when we are talking about ARPA, we're talking about that second round of money, or are some of these things that have been identified here can also be used with that first round?
It would be, do you want to?
Most of them qualify under the, the revenue loss provision, so mostly that's what we're talking about. If, if there is something that would fit in, then we would try to fit it in, but the things like the softwares, that would all be under the revenue loss provision.
And regarding the software, are those likely to be ongoing costs? So, you know, we're, you get, is it just a one-time purchase of the software, or is there like a subscription fee that we are paying annually?
There's a subscription fee. First year is, has implementation costs, so it's like $80,000, and that was split out between the three. And then the next year, I want to say it's $40,000, and then it would be an ongoing cost. But currently, we're spending over $20,000 in permits on units, so it'd just be transferred by the time it was implemented. Like, it, it will cost a little bit more, but not, not $80,000 every year.
That's one of the things that we're trying to be cognizant with, especially the ARPA funds. Any, really, it should, most of the things will be one-time expenses except for the softwares. So looking for those savings, making sure that it's replacing something else.
Right, I, I would want to be careful about, you know, using these ARPA funds towards something that will have ongoing costs when they might not necessarily be, you know, we have to look down the line and when the, when we don't have this money to support that, will we have that money from somewhere else to continue supporting that? So that's definitely an area that I want to make sure. With some, you know, seeing so much of these costs increase with some of the services, you know, just for example, landscaping with the 80 for increased tree services cost, I'm assuming that's outside of the, of the city. Are there, again, just using this as an example, are there areas in which we're looking to see if it's possible to start saving costs by bringing it in-house?
We are, we are looking into that. But it's brand new, where we just found out our tree service contract, it will not be valid this year. So we are looking at what other options would be and how much it would cost to bring it into house. We actually, $80,000 is probably a low number.
I see Keegan, I see Keegan over there. I'm sorry, Mr. Littrell. I'm sorry, Mr. Littrell.
Oh yeah, thank you. Yeah, as Angela just said, we are looking into bringing that in-house. That was a discussion we had when we were reviewing the budget. I just need to gather a few more numbers. The reason this came about is the unfortunate death of the owner of Boulder Tree Service. They were, their prices were very, very good for us, their response rate was very good for us. Now, the other companies that we're looking at are sometimes two and three times more expensive, plus the response time is a lot longer. So the 80 grand would cover the, the additional costs for another company. And in actuality, we spend anywhere from 120 to 150,000 between Public Works, landscaping, and the electric service.
Thank you. I think that's what I have got for right now.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Thank you very much. This is well put together, and I appreciate it from this being my first time through the process, so thank you. One question that I did have is on municipal court, is that a one-time, or is that an ongoing because of the change in the law?
It will, do you? I will let the judge come up and discuss it.
Thank you for the question. It's likely be, gonna be ongoing, but we don't know. The legislature's added at least three new unfunded mandates for requirements for the court. One is, we're required to have jury trials for those that request it for domestic violence cases, which is, and this legislature said, unlike the old rules where we had six jurors for misdemeanors, it's now 12 jurors. We have that set up. I think that was not gonna be a real big impact on us. More impact is AB 424, which requires that someone who's arrested doesn't bail out has to have an adversarial pre-trial release hearing within 48 hours of their arrest. So since we're Monday through Thursday operation now, if someone's rested Thursday night, then by Saturday, they have to have a hearing Friday night by Sunday or on Saturday. So, so it's, it's made us a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week operation. So we have to have the ability to have weekend hearings, and that's ultimately that. So we have to have additional staff to cover the weekends. And not only our agency, but the City Attorney Prosecutor Division will have to be available. Also, we have to hire, or we, the city has to hire attorneys to represent those people that are arrested because it's adversarial, so they have to have legal representation. So that's what we're, we're putting together. I've, I should've kept track of the meetings I've had with other judges over the past three months in trying to set this up in not only our court, but also the Justice Court here in Boulder City. So that's an impact on us for staffing, for, you know, we're operated with what we had for the four days a week, but now we've got to have the ability to have extra people. And we're, it's not a huge expansion. We're taking a part-time clerk and making the part-time clerk a full-time position. We're taking a part-time marshal, making a part, full-time marshal to, to have that ability. Additional expenses come from AB 116, which changes the minor traffic violations from criminal violations to misdemeanor, to civil violations. And the, the way the statute is written, it's very heavy on clerical impact. Everyone who has, that gets a minor traffic violation citation, or I guess it's now a civil summons, they have, we have to, the court are directed to send them a letter advising them that they have to take care of that within 90 days. And so we have to, we have the postage for that. If they don't take care of it within the 90 days, there is a judgment, enter default judgment, and we have to send correspondence to them again notifying them of the judgment. It's, has, that has to go certified, which is very expensive. So that's what the legislature has dumped on us. So that is, so that's, we've estimated around the 300, $307,000, it's gonna cost us more. But in talking with other courts, they say, you know, they're amazed that we could even do that, at that expense. So that's, but it's, you know, some of it is new software, some of it is one-time expenses, but frankly, the majority of it's gonna be ongoing, it looks like.
Judge Miller, I had a couple of questions on that same topic. Has there been an estimate of how many cases this might entail? I mean, there should be some historic record of how many people are arrested on a Thursday or a Saturday, or...
Well, interesting, we're in the middle of what we call a dry run right now in, in our court to try and put those figures together. But on the average, over the weekend, in our court, has been like, like five to seven people arrested over the weekend. Probably about half of those get bailed out. So, and that was a question that came up in the legislature as we're trying to explain the, the impact of this. And Senator Harris says, well, your, your caseload's not that big. And, well, the, the caseload isn't the problem, it's the being, having to be available every weekend is what the, you know, so, so we may not have it every weekend, but we don't know because we're not in charge of who gets arrested. And even the police aren't in charge of who gets arrested because it's the people who commit the crimes. But then, we, if we have weeks, you know, a week where we don't have it this weekend, but we do next weekend, but we have to have the coverage to make sure that, that these, this constitutional requirement is, this is actual, the Supreme Court, earlier in the year, the Nevada Supreme Court said that having adversarial pre-trial release hearings is a constitutional right for the defendant. So we have to have the availability to do it. And so, I guess to answer your question, we're in the midst of, of trying to, to gather. Our estimate so far is probably three, four, maybe five per weekend, but we're doing an actual trial run right now to, to document those things more, more firmly.
And, you know, I, I don't even know if this is legally possible, but I don't believe we house anyone who's arrested here in Boulder City. I believe they're held either in Henderson's Detention Center, or, I, I don't believe it's here, let's put it that way.
Correct.
You know, is it possible that there can be something worked out with other municipal courts to say, you know, every fourth Sunday or weekend that Boulder City would handle the load and, you know, have some type of rotation among other courts?
Well, that would work for the judge, but it won't work for the clerks, for, for our court, because we have to, you know, they, they would then have to have access into and operate our court management system so that whatever happened there would be recorded in our system. And that, that just, we haven't seen a way to work that out. Additionally, I have worked out something similar to that for the, for the Justice Court because I share duties with other rural judges. But the legislature, even though they said, or justice courts can share the load, they didn't put anything in there about municipal courts. So, you know, another thing that, that is an expense that we're dealing with is, the Supreme Court requires us to do what we call pre-trial, or, pre-trial risk assessments. So everyone that is arrested, the judge evaluates the, first, the probable cause for the arrest, and then second, the sets bail or releases the person. And that's, to do that, there is a pre-trial risk assessment that the Supreme Court put together. And I was on the committee that, that did that. But they evaluate the person because of their prior record, their living situation, age at which they first were arrested, some other factors, there's 12 questions. And you come up with a score as to a risk from zero to 14. And based upon that risk, that helps the judge to determine if this person's going to first come back for court, and second, are they gonna reoffend while, if we let them out? Because it, it turns out that, you know, about 80% of the people that get arrested are going to come back to court. And so, you know, why make them post-bail if they can't post-bail? That's kind of the reason behind all of this, is if, if somebody can't post-bail, why do they have to sit in jail with, whereas somebody who had money could post-bail and get out? So it's trying to make this a more uniform, equitable judicial system or justice system. At any rate, you have to do this pre-trial risk assessment. Well, to get that done, we've had to, we, the court has had to contract with the Las Vegas Municipal Court and their pre-trial risk assessment people. So we did coordinate with, with them. We tried to do it with Henderson, and we couldn't get it to work with Henderson. They weren't, weren't willing, the jail and the, who, and the police department over there and Henderson were not amenable to us, to helping us get this done. So we reached out to Las Vegas Justice, or Las Vegas Municipal Court, and so they provide now our risk assessments. So I get, if someone is arrested, say they get arrested now, by around 5 o'clock, I would get the declaration arrest, the, the arrest report. I would get the TCR, the booking sheet, and I would get a risk assessment emailed to me from Las Vegas Municipal Court. And then I can review that. And then there's places where I set bail, give them or release, or release with conditions. We do have our, luckily here, we have our marshal division who's already monitoring people, so rather than have somebody sit in jail, we can do the monitoring through the, through the marshal division. But, but ultimately, the Las Vegas charges us for that. So that costs about 55, or it does cost us right now, $55 per arrest that we're doing at the demand and order of the Supreme Court. So that's another thing that's just come into effect since last...
October?
October or November, we've been doing it since then.
Okay, and that's an existing contract you have then for those assessments?
Yes, there's, we have a MOU between us and the Las Vegas Municipal Court.
Okay, so as far as the cost of this then, we're looking at the two current part-time positions going full-time, and then a software purchase?
And lots of postage.
Okay. Any other costs involved that you're aware of? I mean, I, I know you've mentioned that, you know, each defendant would have an attorney appointed, so...
Right. I'm gonna, because Cindy, our court administrator, has spent a lot of time, clearback during the legislature, providing financial information to them, so she may be able to answer the other costs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Garcia, I'm the court administrator for municipal court. We did, in answer maybe to one of your other questions that you had, we haven't been tracking as far as what we'll have on the weekend, but currently, we have court two days a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays. And we've been following the pre-trial risk assessments because they're billing us and we have the numbers in front of us. So with the pre-trial risk assessments, the last quarter, we had 55. And so those people, the percentage of them that bailed out or that were able to be released, it was about a third. So all the rest, everybody else would've had to have, they would've had to have the hearing. And so we're looking at having, going from two days a week to four days a week, hopefully not five days a week of court. So because we only have the one judge, we also had to anticipate pro temp fees for judges coming in to sit in his place if he ever wants to take a vacation and maybe not be on call 24 hours a day. Because currently, he does these at night, weekends, not to mention the warrants. And because we are a municipal court, and we have our own, we're not attached to any other court, they, by law, they cannot come into our court system. We can't have another clerk from another agency come in and say, I'm gonna enter your cases for you, and I'm gonna track them through the system. Because if there's any money taken, it would be an audit issue, so they can't take money for us. And so it was the pro temp fees, we're looking at having additional marshal staff. Currently, we only have them there when we have court, we have a full staff of marshals. So with four days a week, we would have to have obviously more people. We also had to purchase the BlueJeans software for virtual appearances. We're hoping we won't have to have attorneys present representing our defendants in person, but other agencies are having them go straight to the jail. So I'm, I'm assuming they would charge us, the city for that time.
You're talking about the defense attorneys?
Yes.
Yes.
Because that's currently what we look at in our budget. But that's, you know, utilities, the cleaning, there were so many things that other agencies have brought up that we hadn't even thought of. North Las Vegas is doing the hearings now, and they're having night court and weekend court. And it was something they had to contract for their employees, and they're using all overtime for the weekend court. But they're pulling those funds out of the vacancy, their vacancy fund, like they have a little fund where they don't have the positions filled. But as of July 1st, they're also hitting the same wall we are, so they are going to have to fill all of those vacancies. So they won't, they're in contracts right now. Everybody, it's an unknown. We just don't know what we're looking at.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms.... Councilmember Jorgensen, did you have any other questions on other topics? Well, I'm not sure where we, we are at exactly as far as topics for questions, but, you know, I, I share Councilmember Adams' concerns about using these ARPA funds for software contracts that would continue on into the future. You had mentioned something about the full-time employee for BCTV. You know, if we go back eight years, I think, or six years, there was no public information officer, communications department. I, I'm concerned that, you know, we're establishing these different ways of doing things. You know, we have a communications manager. I don't know that there's a separate BCTV department.
It's a separate division, but I'll call up Lisa LaPlante, and she'll go through some identified savings that we, we've found for you.
All right.
And certainly, let me start with a little bit of background. I didn't get here until July of 2018. Prior to my arrival, we did utilize a local PR firm. The, the PR firm, while able to do a lot of responsive social media and able to start a lot of work, they weren't here full-time. They weren't under our roof, talking to people and learning about a lot of the things that were going on. So a lot of their, their information was reactive instead of proactive. And so prior to that, we did have at BCTV in 2010, we actually had a studio, which was mostly run by volunteers, but there was a full-time coordinator and a couple of part-timers there as well, from my understanding, this is before I arrived. But we just didn't have, we didn't have the lineup that we have now. We didn't have the transparency that I believe we have now, especially given the last two years where people haven't been able to necessarily come to public meetings, they were having to watch them from home. And now they can watch them from their television set, they can watch the meeting from their, their iPhone, there's a lot of different ways that they can see our meetings. So we have changed the dynamics. The, the question is, do we want to continue to really push that forward, to, to continue that forward? I don't know that we have a choice because we've given this opportunity over the past two years. I'm not sure that people are going to feel comfortable, not everybody feels comfortable sitting in a room with 15, 20 people yet. So I think that we, we would do a disservice by trying to cut that back. And honestly, we're, we're basically treading water right now where we stand with a part-timer. We can do even better if we had that part-timer full-time. And I, I just went through a couple of things real quick, and I, I wanted to mention, we actually took ownership of BCTV over the last year. took ownership of BCTV over the last year. We're no longer working with MediaStar. So we have our own equipment, we've made a few investments, and in that, we've been able to eliminate the lease that we were under, the agreement that we were under with MediaStar. And that has saved us some money. I, right now, am looking.
Do you have, do you have a figure on how much?
Yeah. So with MediaStar, that's about seven thousand dollars. But in looking at our budget, BCTV is on course to save about twelve thousand dollars for fiscal year '22. And that's in maintenance, technical, and travel and training budget. But also the communications portion, which is a separate division, is on course to save about ten thousand dollars this year. Because we're, we haven't had to spend any money on professional services, on marketing or on travel and training. One of the things about marketing that has changed is we are able to do our own marketing for a lot less than what we would have done in prior years because social media has made it so simple. I've got an ad right now on social media that I had, the part-time employee, Carly, Carly Poindexter, I think you guys have all met her. She put together a forty-five second ad that we've got on social media for the big clean. And it's already raked, it's raked up like a thousand views on all of the various social media sites. We couldn't reach that fifteen, twenty years ago. We couldn't reach that five years ago. So we've, we've changed the dynamics quite a bit. Our social media has grown, it's exploded. When I came on board, we had Facebook and we had four thousand followers. We now have seventy-four hundred followers on Facebook. Somebody up there talked me into doing Instagram. Thank you, Councilman Adams. So we now have almost two thousand people following us on Instagram. We've got about a thousand people following us on Twitter. And then just as of, I think it was a couple of months ago, I said, let's burst open the next door, let's get on Nextdoor. Thirty-three hundred fifty homes in Boulder City that we're able to reach for free. So it's changed, marketing has changed, and so we can actually see more cash savings in our marketing budget as well. So those are things that I've taken away from the '22 budget, but also I'm looking to eliminate in the '23 budget. There are some things that we may still need to buy here and there because we are making the changes over from the MediaStar equipment. So I do have some cushion in my '23 budget, just in case there is something I need to replace. But I feel that in the next year, we'll be able to recognize even more cost savings. Right now, I look at it as a prob, approximate savings of, and Angela had mentioned this, she mentioned twenty-five thousand dollars from the communications budget, but the BCTV increase would be about seventy-two thousand. So yes, the assumed net total is going to be about forty-seven thousand dollars more. But I think we can, over a period of time, whittle that down by using more of the funding that we have to purchase equipment and not lease it. The other thing is with the MediaStar folks, we had to pay for them when they came out. We found a local company, right here in Las Vegas, they can come out and they don't charge us for room and per diem and that type of thing. So there's going to be recognized cost savings there as well.
Thank you. You know, one, I prefer not to refer to it as marketing because we're not a business, we're a government. So it's public information, public service information. And I believe that the public relations firm that was previously providing service ran about ninety-six thousand dollars a year. My concern is that, you know, we don't say, well, we have a communications and then we have BCTV. We, we have public service information. And I think we're better off looking at that under one umbrella than trying to split it out and say, well, we're going to add here, we're going to add there. You know, we have one effort, I believe, for public information. And, you know, that, that comes under communications. So I'm a little hesitant to say that, you know, we have BCTV because that was really a very different situation. Cox Cable had an office here in Boulder City. There was actually a studio there, there was video equipment, there was all of that. And with the, the city employees that you had mentioned, I believe it was the PIO and two, I don't think they were full-time, but that was a very different type of situation than we have now because of improvements in equipment. So I'm a little leery when we start, you know, breaking these departments up and everybody's got to get a budget. And then it becomes hard to follow over time as to how much money we're actually spending on this. Certainly, the avenues for putting information out have increased significantly, you know, and that's a good thing for the public. But it's also something where you start throwing a lot of dollars in different directions and maybe not achieving much more than what you had before. So I, I do see some value, certainly for the staff that we have, the ability to keep the public informed with our, you know, video capabilities and the social media. But we, we always have this bracket creep, I guess, is what I would refer to it as. Oh, we can do this much more, we can do this much more. Well, we can do a lot more. I mean, we could put ten million dollars into this budget and just absolutely flood all of Southern Nevada with information about Boulder City, but I don't know if we obtain any value by doing that.
You know, and it's as simple as if, if you're asking, or if you wanted to provide direction, we could put it all in one budget. And, and I don't have a problem with that at all. I think that, given the last two years, we have seen an absolute necessity to be able to reach our residents in a different way. It used to be that we could have town hall meetings. We haven't had a town hall meeting, I don't know, in, in at least two years that I'm aware of, as, as a city. Maybe even a little bit longer than that. And so we need, in my opinion, in order to continue moving forward in, in reaching those residents who may not necessarily be as reachable, we need to continue looking at how to reach residents in a digital way. Again, I'm not sure at what point people will feel comfortable coming back. We did see a great turnout for the State of the City address. But we also saw over four hundred people view it online that weekend because maybe they didn't want to attend. So I know that from the statistics I saw, more people watched it online than actually attended. We need to continue to keep that momentum moving forward, in my opinion. But obviously, I have a pecuniary interest in that.
Well, and again, I, I think, you know, that it, it is certainly a way to reach people more easily and find them where they are. As you mentioned, there are more people viewing these things at a later time than there are coming to a live event or even watching it live. So I understand the value in that. I'm just afraid, you know, what is it that we're informing people of? Certainly with the pandemic, that's essential information. What else are we informing them of? But it, it is a good ability. I, I'm just concerned that, you know, it, it seems to be this dark hole that we say, well, we can do more, we can do more. We've gone from no one in communications, which I don't believe was a wise decision, but that was a previous decision that was made. But now we're looking to go up to three employees for it. But we're asking a lot more as well. I, I do understand all of those things. I would prefer, though, to see this under one budget so that we can look at it over time and see what's happening over time and how these costs are actually being adjusted over time.
And that's, that's a fair, a fair discussion. The, the other thing that I have to say is I take a look at our website growth over, you know, the number of visits that we've seen over the last four years. And I regularly get contacted by department directors who have an immediate need to post something online and they are not trained to do so. And so there is some work creep that goes on that, you know, all of a sudden, I've got four or five requests and they need to be taken care of in a fast, efficient manner. One particular situation was just within the last month where we thought that we might have a temporary power outage. And we thought that we might have to shut off power to the entire city for only anywhere between ten minutes to forty minutes. And being able to get that information out quickly is critical, especially for those who are living at home on equipment that has to be plugged in. And even then, there was some concern, some level of concern via social media that we weren't doing enough to reach residents. There were some complaints that we needed to do more. Short of going door-to-door, we did everything that we could. Unfortunately, Mr. Stupitz and his, his crew were able to do the work without ever having to shut off the power. But it's things like that that are going to pop up periodically that we need to be prepared for. It's always better to be prepared for a situation like that and be able to get the word out as quickly as possible. Posting to social media is helpful, but there are people who are not in tune with social media. And so with BCTV, we still have not as many viewers. I think it's about three thousand households that can watch BCTV. But what I've done is I've taken that BCTV and I've started streaming it live on YouTube. It's been streaming live for about a year now. And so if you don't have BCTV at home, you can still watch it on YouTube. So when those messages do come out, if there is an emergency, if there's something that we need to get out right away, we're able to get that pushed out via those channels as well. Again, I, I have a great interest in this because it is my background. But for example, when the fire department contacts me about a new program and says, we need a flyer developed, I'm not a graphics arts designer. I'm somewhat proficient, but I really need help designing something. And so having that web designer, or web editor and graphics designer on staff will help me get that information out for them in a quick manner.
Again, I, I don't doubt the ability. I've, I've seen Carly's work, it's outstanding. I, I see Holly's work as our AV person, again, outstanding. Your work. The, the question always gets to be that we are a city of sixteen thousand people. And could we have every possible capability ever invented or thought of or imagined? Well, probably not. There would be some limit. So it's always deciding where that limit is. Do I see value in doing these things? I do. I, I think there's a lot of value there. The question I have is we keep fracturing these departments and saying, well, you know, now we're going to do this and then we're going to do that. Let's just say it's communications and, and look at a budget for that, see what capabilities are in there, rather than, you know, continually spreading out the, the money over departments that are essentially doing the same task.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think that that's doable. We can bring that back to you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Oh.
Councilmember Bridges?
I just want to say that in terms of communication, I mean, I'm a little biased to considering my background, but when I first moved to Boulder City and when I, actually about four years ago, there was a, a dark hole, a black hole of information. And if everything that seemed to be out there in the community had to do with opinion. And I know that, I even met with you, you know, it was like, I've heard this gossip and I've heard this rumor and I, and when we started, when we, we got up here, part of the decision was we wanted transparency of information and whether it was going on the website and being able to drill down to checks written. But also have a non-biased source of information coming from the city as to what's going on and how are things going, I truly appreciate it. I understand having a, an umbrella over communications. I mean, I come from a, I worked in corporate communications and, you know, having that all be one. But I, in this day and age, you know, even if population size doesn't change, the, the need of technology and the level of communications does. The amount of information being sent out. I've gone on to Nextdoor and, and the other thing is, it's like a marketplace that people in the city communicate with each other. And with the administrators, they're able to say, well, this is, this is what's going, this is really what's going on. And, and I think that's invaluable. So this is not just really a compliment, but an understanding of what's required today, even if the populations don't change.
Thank you.
And I, I would add one more thing. You know, as I mentioned, I, I certainly see value in doing this. I certainly see the skills and abilities that the people we have doing it. You know, not that many years ago, people would say, you know, it'd get announced, well, it's on the website. And people would say, well, I don't have access. Now what I'm starting to hear is, why wasn't this on the website? So it has changed. You know, people have become more technically savvy as they go along. And yes, there's, you know, an ever-driving force within IT or technology. I've got the next best idea. So, you know, it was Facebook, it's Instagram, it's whatever it is. Well, there's always going to be something new out there. We certainly need to keep up with that. But how many dollars should we be throwing at chasing essentially the same technology just in a different format? So again, I appreciate it. I, I just would like to see that effort, which I call public information, not marketing, in one place. So we can see, okay, this is what we're doing in public information-wise.
Good.
Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I agree. I think keeping it under, under one, one common name such as communications, I think that's, that's more clear, easier to track. Like Councilmember Bridges said, I was critical when you came in. I, I came into your office, I let you know, when I was on the other side of the dais. The work you do has, has been incredible. It's, it's, it's day and night compared to what was being done with the PR firm that we had before. So I, I think that's really important. I think, I understand what the mayor is saying in that, you know, we, there is kind of a deep, deep well and how much can you throw into, to reaching people? There is only so far, you know, that we can't penetrate into that. I think what's most important is to make sure that we do have it available, that we do have the information available for those who are seeking it so that, and that it is easily found. So, you know, you find that medium of making sure that the information is out there and available so that the, the public can see it and readily access it, and then also can disseminate that with their friends, their family, and then they can come in turn and look back to where, where it came from. So I think that's where the goal should be, not always in, you know, get it out to every single person. You know, one area that I think, and I know we've talked about this before, one area I think that we should be looking is also making sure that the accessibility is, is there. So currently, we provide closed captioning through YouTube, right? Because it's a, it's an automated feature on YouTube. It might be something that we want to consider handling in-house to make sure that if there is somebody who, for whatever reason, needs access to that DVD or that flash drive of the meeting, could have access to, to closed captioning to if it's needed. Again, this might only support, you know, a small handful of those in our community, but they have a right to this information just as everybody else does. So for me, that's where I would like to make sure that we are turning to. I understand how important it is to have, you know, a graphic designer, web designer, because what they do is they get the work done, they get it done right and they get it done fast. I, I've done that work before and I know the difference of the time it takes me to get something together versus the time it takes a professional to do it. And it's not in, again, night and day in the level of professional quality you get. So I think it's needed. I think this, these last two years has shown us how needed this work is. So I don't have a problem heading in this direction. But I do want to look at making sure that we are increasing our accessibility in, in every way that we can. So that's, that's where I want to make sure our focus is.
And I know this isn't necessarily a topic for the discussion under communications, it's a little of everything. We did, we did start utilizing AudioEye after my arrival, which helps people who have visual impairment be able to read documents on our website. We, we have a couple of different options on our website for that. Also, Taylor and I have been talking quite a bit and our next plan is to make a, to get a hearing loop in here. We had hoped it would be installed by now, but we're still in the process, of course, of doing the, the remodel. So there will be a hearing loop in here for those who have hearing disabilities. They'll be able to use their hearing aids to hear the meetings when they're in here. But yes, there is still, it is not the most cost-effective way to go to, to do the live closed captioning. But I, I think it's imperative. I would love to be able to do it. It, it is something that I will put on my wish list, absolutely.
Well, I, I think for me, the biggest thing is, you know, we are relying on another service. And that service happens to be free right now and I don't imagine it going anywhere. But again, we're relying on a third party to provide that for us. And that could change at any time. And I want to make sure that we are ready to go when and if that need happens, you know. And I think it's really important that we be aware that it's great that we have it now, but it doesn't mean that it's always going to be there because as the mayor said, technology changes, platform changes, where people go changes. And I'd like to think that we're And I'd like to think that we're all always going to move forward and have that ability be available to us. But we need to be sure that we are, we are covered and that our citizens have access to that information in the chance that it might not be something that is available suddenly.
Absolutely. And I'll keep tabs on the companies that are available. The, I think the one that I, that I was most impressed with at my last check was out of Illinois. But they do have people in Las Vegas that they contract with.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. LaPlante? Thank you.
Thank you.
With regard to, there's also an inclusion of changing a current part-time position to a full-time position within Parks and Rec.
Yes.
And I, I, Mr. Hall, I don't, I see you're, that you're here, you're available. This won't be a money saver if the person currently is working overtime, currently working more than 40 hours a week, would it?
Well, if they, if they were made full time, it would, we would not have to work them overtime. And I would think that that would, would save the city money. We're looking at about a.
Well, let me back up here just a moment. What is in your memo is saying that the person is already working 40 or more hours a week. So I'm not, first off, I don't think we should do that. If we have a part-time position to work them 40 or more hours a week without putting them on full-time status. But if they're already doing that, how does changing this position come as a savings? I think it's just really coming to the realization that that position requires more than 40 hours a week.
Well, yeah, in 2020, we put in a request and basically we put in a request for a full-time secretary. In 2008, we were cut a full-time secretary. So we didn't have, we were cut a lot in our, in our budget through the budget decline. So we put it in in 2020. They declined, the city council declined that. But they made a promise. They said basically, we'll make it a 32-hour-a-week purse position. However, in the next fiscal year, we'll make it a full-time position. Well, obviously, that didn't happen. We had COVID hit and a number of other things hit. And so this is the three years from 2020, or two years, we're requesting a full-time position.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is when I look at the memo that you have and it's saying, well, this, this position would save money for the department by moving it to a full-time position when the person's already working overtime hours.
They're working overtime hours as, as, as we need to, not, not every week, but as we need to. And the thing is with a full-time person, most of our staff does not have an overtime budget. And they do not work overtime. And so we would like to make this a full-time position and, you know, save the city some money.
Again, I don't see the money savings. I think what it is, is as I said earlier, this is simply a realization that this position needs to be full-time. It's not saving money by having someone part-time and having to pay them overtime. It's simply saying that the position needs to be 40 hours and we're not going to save any money.
Well, it's budget neutral. That's.
Okay, well, there's another term that I didn't see in your memo. But again, I still don't see where this is a savings. Let's just say it's a realization, the position needs 40 hours.
I agree with that.
Okay. Again, when I read these memos and it's like, well, we're saving money. And I start looking at, you know, where you're, you're already saying the person's working more than 40 hours a week. I don't see the cost savings there.
Okay. Well, Angela's.
Well, again, we've got the new term, we've got the new term now. It's called budget control rather than saving money. So we'll.
Yes, sir.
We'll put that in. We'll say it's budget control.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you.
And we did adjust the line items in his budget. So the increase of the moving into 40 hours is reduced in other lines. So it is no net cost over last year's budgeted amount for the, for the budget.
Okay. And also within your memo or within the budget for Parks and Rec, there's a mention of software coming, some software package.
Well, basically, right now, we don't have the ability to register people online. And that has been a problem. We tried with the Tyler Group to do that. That just didn't work out.
Who's the Tyler Group?
Tyler Group is a group that we work with, with the previous finance director in establishing a program for online registration, registration for facility rentals, for that type of thing. And we've been working with them for over, what, a few years?
So that's, that's our enterprise solution. So Munis that handles all of our accounting. It has permitting, it has all of these different things, modules, HR module, the finance, all of that. So there is a piece in there called Tyler Parks and Rec. And I actually dealt with that in my previous city. And once we finally got to implementation, it didn't work with our version that we were using. So.
That's correct.
It was a similar situation.
We'd like to give the, the public the chance to register online.
Well, that, that's what I'm getting at, is that's what I hear from the public.
Yes.
And I also think it would add a great deal of efficiency to the Parks and Rec programs. To be able to have somebody do that. So I think that would also address some of the issues with employee time that's needed to collect all this information. And, you know, I have no idea how you are functioning, you know, handwritten ledgers. I don't know what you're doing right now. But that is where I think a focus should be. And to go this period of time with people saying, you know, why can't I just register online? And then having staff have to do whatever they're doing. Yeah, I think that that's a priority.
I agree.
And actually was a priority for some time.
Yes, sir.
Anyone have questions along those lines while Mr. Hall's here for Parks and Rec? Councilmember Jorgensen.
I just was looking at the 7% increase due to minimum wage. Does that go along with the lifeguards and?
Normally, that goes along with all the part-time staff. Yeah. And lifeguards, cashiers, our, our sports program, our officials, you know, that type of thing.
I think we need to move up to minimum wage. I just saw Chick-fil-A was going to offer 1925 an hour. I mean, I'm not saying that's what we need to offer, but minimum wage would be great.
I agree.
And, you know, that's actually a note I have here. This nine, whatever it is, 975, I think, right now. Nevada's already scheduled for yearly increases. We know that local employers are already offering more than that. We have a number of these positions that are open. And perhaps some of the reason they're open is because somebody can easily go make 20% more by not working for the city, but going to a job that pays a little bit more. We're in the process of a classification and compensation study. I know that a lot gets made out of, oh, this is a 7% increase. Well, you know, if we look at it for a typical part-time employee over the course of a week, you know, we're, we're looking at maybe 20 or 30 or $40 more per, per employee. So yeah, you know, there are good times to use percentages and bad times to use percentages. But I don't think the 975 is going to be enough. Based on state law that's going to increase this each year and also on just the reality of what's out there. As Councilmember Jorgensen mentioned, there are companies that are paying more than that. I can drive down Boulder Parkway and see at least one sign where they're offering more than that as well. So yes, I get we can say, oh, this is going to be a 40% increase. Well, when you're not paying people very much and you have to bring them up to what the market is, yeah, it may look like a large percentage increase.
And that's one of our biggest problems right now, finding staff to run our programs. Because again, we, we pay so low. City Anderson offered, I think through the ARPA funds, they offered a bonus to all their full-time and part-time people. And I know for SafeKey, for example, they were giving them a, I think it was a $750 bonus just to sign up to be a SafeKey leader. And we can't compete with that, so.
And that's my point, is what's, what's in this right now is probably not sufficient.
I agree.
Any other questions or comments on, for Mr. Hall? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Roger, I'm sorry. I do have one other question, which actually applies to several of these programs. With regard to the fitness center, looking across the line on those figures, the current budget is looking at 81,845. The previous year's budget is, seems to be showing 32,916. And it's saying that the new amount is somehow 0.3% less than the other. 81,000 to 32,000 sounds like a substantial increase.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah.
I'll research why it does that.
Okay, and.
You know what, Mayor, if you don't mind, just so I can answer the question now. Julie Howley, Parks and Recreation Manager. I believe that 35,000 that you're looking at is the actual from the previous year. So that's actually what we spent. So while we are budgeted the 80, we only spent the 35.
And I appreciate that and I, I think you're probably right. But as I look at the other programs, SafeKey, Tiny Tot, Special Class, all of those have budgets at one level and the actual spent, and it's not just for this fiscal year, because this fiscal year is not over, but it was for the previous fiscal years, are never coming very close to the budgeted amount. So when I see something like that, two things come to my mind. Either too much money is being requested or the program's not properly implemented. So I would like to see something resolved about that. Either these programs are going to be implemented up close to what their budget levels are or the budget should be reduced to say, you know what, we're just not seeing that occur.
And absolutely, we are looking definitely towards that. I think we're still in an influx of not exactly knowing based on 2020 and everything that happened there and our closures and what happened in 2021. We're at a state where we don't want to cut ourselves short should everything open back up and then we find ourselves lacking funds. So I have a feeling based on whatever happens this next year, we'll, you'll definitely see those, those amounts more in line.
And certainly, these are the types of programs that were heavily impacted by the effects of COVID. But I believe there is one year prior, 2019, or the 2020 fiscal year would have been unimpacted by the pandemic. We're seeing the same pattern for the programs, at least what I saw. That's what I picked up as I looked at those figures. So again, I believe these are all worthwhile programs. But either something needs to be done to better implement them or we need to look at the budgets and say, you know what, pandemic or no pandemic, we never reached the levels that are being requested.
All right, we'll keep a close eye on that and make adjustments moving forward.
Well, that's what we're here about is the next budget.
I think we're still fluctuating just because of the last two years.
Well, that's possible. But as I say, the figures didn't seem to change much pre-pandemic to pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Overall, how are wage increases being calculated in this budget? I mean, I see within some of the budgets, I think the police department had something in there.
So at this moment, the only thing in the budget is contractual step increases. Everything else is not currently in the budget because we're not sure how labor negotiations are going. And then this will come back after the, what's decided with the class and comp as well.
And I agree, the timing of this is very close and also probably in the wrong order. But that's beyond our control, the order of it, because we have to approve this budget prior to the time that these contracts, the labor contracts will expire. So what are we doing as far as forecasting is what I'm asking.
Is Bryce behind me? He's not behind me, is he?
He's looking right at you.
Yeah. We're looking into it. We'll have a better answer for you in April. There are just too many balls in the air right now to have a definite at this moment in time.
But when we look at our budget and what is it, 65% is payroll.
It is. I, I know there's thing, there's lots of talks of what could happen.
Okay. And hey, we've got two months before we have to actually make this official, right?
It's going to be fun.
Are you going to go into proprietary funds?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So I'm not done, but that was one of the questions I had. I also understand that, you know, this is not, this is about operations and maintenance rather than CIP. But you do have some figures in there about the CIP. The voter approval question needs to be addressed as far as voter approval for expenditures out of the CIP fund. You've got that in your graphic.
So currently for voted, well, currently in fiscal year '23, there's $2 million moving out of voter approval, which is the end of the land sale money from Track 349. That was to benefit utilities. Which graphic are you talking about? Sorry. And then there's a million dollars that will go to support the general fund, capital improvements, which was.
I'm referring to the graphic you have on page 475, where lease payments go.
Okay.
And you're showing a total of 18,822,110, 71.1% to the general fund, 8.9% to special revenue and 20% to the CIP.
Yep. So right now, what's approved to be spent out of that money is the million dollars for general fund. So a million dollars every year is going to acquisitions and improvements to assist with capital costs of the general fund. And which makes sense because when the charter was put in place and the 20% rule for lease revenue had to go to at least 20% to the general fund operating, 20% to capital expenditures of the general fund, which would be approved by only the voters, and 60% that can go either way. So the money, the 20% that's going into the voter approval fund is growing, but that's not a bad thing. So if we, the, if the Boulder City has a need, we can put out a ballot question for the voters to approve how to spend it. So at the end of this year.
What, what is the balance of that fund right now?
I'll tell you right now. So projected at the end of fiscal year '23, it's about 6.4 million dollars that's unallocated. That's not any land sale money. And then at the end of fiscal year, or '22, I'm sorry, that's '22. At the end of fiscal year '23, it'll be about $9 million. That's unallocated. That would be available for the voters to decide how they'd like to spend it.
Well, you know, we're, we're only having elections every two years. So we need to try and forecast some of those.
CIP costs and inflation are going up. So having money in this pool for them to decide what to do with is not a bad thing. And it growing is not a bad thing. It's just.
I don't think it's a bad thing either until you get so much money in there that somebody comes along and does something who, eh, maybe wasn't such a good idea. Plus, you know, we certainly hear from the departments about needs that they would like to have met.
The 20%, it's supposed to be for capital improvement, though. Like, we shouldn't use it for operations?
I'm not, I'm not discussing operations. I'm discussing the requests that we get from all of the departments for capital expenditures.
Okay.
This million dollars that goes in there and then comes back out to the general fund or for general.
Sorry, that's, I didn't mean to cut you off, but it just, it stays in acquisition improvements. It just to support CIP projects that support the general fund, such as parks and such as streets and things like that. It just, but it does, never goes into the general fund. It just, it supports projects that would have been paid for from the general fund.
To finish my question then, when does that expire or does it expire?
Every year. So every year, if we don't do a million dollars worth of projects, it would transfer back into the voter approved.
Voter approval had been obtained sometime in the past for.
Oh, the general fund, that ballot question does not expire. There's no sunset on it for the million dollars to be used for general fund.
Thank you. That, that was my question. And again, I know we're not discussing that at this meeting. And again, I know we're not discussing that at this meeting, but we have a limited time to consider these ballot questions. So I think it needs to be part of discussion for another meeting, but still part of our With the utility fund administration costs, and again, I know you're going to go into the enterprise or proprietary funds, where does that money come back to in the general fund? We're charging our proprietary fund administrative fees.
We are, we are, it's an interfund transfer, so you'll see in each department that assists the utilities, a credit in, it's called interfund salary. So you'll see a credit coming in to, like, the city manager's payroll, not payroll finance, IT's budget.
So is that shown as an expense?
It's shown as a negative expense. So it hits the admin fund at $775,000 as an interfund expense, and then it's a credit back to the general fund.
All right, so within each department's budget, then...
That it supports utilities, yes.
Well, it's showing as positive cash coming in for that department as a revenue.
It's reducing their expenses by that amount. It's not a revenue, it's an interfund transfer, so it's basically payroll, does the payroll for utilities, rather than handing cash, it just, like, it...
Well, what I'm getting at is, will I be able to see it?
Yes.
When we look at these breakdowns, I'll see something, then, under expenses that is a negative expense.
Yes.
If you're talking English grammar, it's not good to have double negatives, but we're talking dollars here, so it would show as a negative expense for whatever that is, and is it identified as...
The category is called interfund salary, but you'd see it in each department, if you, when you drill down into the departments in the budget book.
All right. Okay, regarding that portion, then, anyone else have questions before we move to Councilmember Bridges?
Yeah, just want to make sure from this last issue that I was looking at the right Page 272 of our packet, so for, what is it, I'm looking at administrative services. Temporary, let's see, salaries, 297, 694, with an interfund salary reimbursement of a negative $48,250, so that's where that...
Yep, that's it, coming back into the general.
That's coming back in, rather than showing it as revenue, which is, it really shouldn't be, it's actually paying for the...
That service.
Person in that department who does work on the utilities.
Exactly.
Got it. I just wanted to make sure I was looking at the right number. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, why don't we take a 10-minute recess? We will resume then at 2:45. Thank you.